Good evening. Welcome to the April 25th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded via cable access. So we'd like everybody to be aware that all of their comments will be public record over the air. That being said, we have a review of old and new business.
Mr. Chairman, good evening.
Good evening.
We have been busy in the office with applications. We are in the process of, we're expecting a couple of new applications to come in. We also have received an application, a resume for the position of Director of Land Use. We are working on scheduling a screening interview with this person. Seems to be a very good candidate, so we're very pleased about that possibility. We'll keep you informed as developments happen.
Fantastic.
Yeah. We, as you can tell, we are not at quorum right now for a site plan decision. So we have a couple of informal presentations and Mr. Buckley is prepared. So I'm going to ask him to do his presentations if that's okay. Mr. Peterson will be arriving in a little while.
Okay.
One of the items that we have in there, action items, is a lot released for one of the lots on the Village Estate subdivision, part of the State Hospital project. The lot, there was an existing home when the subdivision was approved. It was questionable, it was not in the covenant, but the attorney doing the closing, the house is selling, would like to have affirmed that the lot is not under covenant at all. So that's why we've been asked to do that. So once Mr. Peterson is here, we will ask you to vote on that.
You are echoing through somebody's, Mr. Buckley, that's not ready yet?
You're ready in one sec.
Come on, Bill.
Just a handsome face.
357 South Street.
For the record, my name is Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group, and I'm here representing Cindy McKay, who is with us this evening as well. And what we're before the board for this evening is we want to bring an informal, have a start an informal discussion with the board on the construction of what we hope to be an open space residential development subdivision. So the property is at 357 South Street, and I think this is the McKay compound, so heading down South Street, go past, I think it's Paula on the right, where everybody used to get their Christmas trees, et cetera. So Mr. and Mrs. McKay are gone now. Cindy's the owner of it, and will be, would like to do subdivision on the land. So we've had a lot of discussions with her, and we've come up with a design that I think is good for her, meets her goals, but it's also a good project as far as the town is concerned. So let me just start, this property is about 12.6 acres. I've given you two sheets. The first one is what is a conventional. It lies within the R40 zoning district, which is 40,000 square feet and 200 feet of frontage, but it's also in Water Resource Protection District Zone 2. So if you look at your map, you look at the plan there, off to the right, that's the Sprague Road Pumping Station. And then if you look to the top, if you went off the top of this, that's all land owned by the Conservation Commission. That is part of the Old Cochasset River Park, stretches all the way out to Mill Street. And as you look to the left, you can see that that is where I'm showing you there, that's the Cochasset River. So anybody's driven down West Street lately, that was the dam that the town just repaired.
Right.
That's the Cochasset River right there. And if you go a little bit further, there's White's Farm Lane, which is also a cluster subdivision. So the land behind White's Farm Lane is also open space. So the land behind there, if you, if I showed you a big map, which actually I could, you can walk from the back of this property all the way to Route 1 and stay on either town land or state land. So you'd be on conservation land, on water department land, on state forest land, or if you took a left, when you went over Mill Street, you would be on Rhythm State Forest, and you can go down to Thurston Street. So this abuts a huge parcel of land. Why is that important? It's going to be important in a second when I describe what we want to do here. So what I'm showing you right here, right now, is a conventional subdivision. And as the board knows, that in order to determine the number of lots that you can build in an open space residential development, we have to show you through a preliminary plan that we could build a cluster subdivision without any waivers. It's typically, it doesn't say that in the bylaw, but it's typically the standard that the board has held for decades. So what I'm showing you here is a cluster subdivision, I mean, the conventional subdivision. So you can see the roadway coming in. The roadway itself is about 570 feet long. Over here to the right, if you can look up on the screen, this is the McKay Homestead, the house, the barn. And in this particular design, we're showing it retained, which it works well. So the road would come in and then curve around these wetlands. There's a wetland in the back here that stretches toward the northeast, and it almost cuts it off, all this upland in the back, but it doesn't quite. So we can bring the road in, and with, you know, with the boards, working with the board, I'm very confident that we could get an approval through the subdivision control and through the Wetlands Protection Act. If you think about 204 E Street, same thing. What we have there is no other way to get to all that backland, so you do have a crossing. And that would be the issue here. So I'm very confident that I could do this conventionally. And you can see that there would be one lot over here on the left, and then there'd be one large lot in the back. And I can put, I've put all these lines on here to show you what the limitations are. There's this blue line, which is a Zone A, because the Cochasset River is a tributary to a surface water supply, which is Attleboro. So what does that mean? That means that you can't have a septic system in a Zone A, and you can't have drainage in a Zone A. So you can see that I've kept all the septic systems outside the Zone A. McKay Homestead already has one. And the drainage system, which we would have to build, would be in this area back here, again, outside the Zone A. This kind of purplish line is the 150-foot septic system setback line. Again, I'm showing you that we can put the septic systems outside of that. I'm giving you proof that we could actually do this type of subdivision. So three lots is what we're saying that would be an allowed conventional. So let me go to the next sheet, if you flip over. I know it's busy, I should have shut off the topo, it really doesn't add anything to this. But what we want to do here, as the board knows, what you can do under a cluster subdivision, you can have a smaller lot. So instead of a 60,000 square foot lot, we can knock these lots down to 30,000 square feet. And instead of 200 feet of frontage, we can have 50 feet of frontage. So what we're showing here is, again, if you look over here on the screen, on the right, Lot 1, the McKay Homestead would say, I don't know if that's what somebody would do, but we show that it would stay, can stay there. Lot 2 would be, also have frontage on South Street, because remember, we can have only 100 feet, we can have as little as 50 feet of frontage, and South Street has about 300, almost 360 feet of frontage. So we can get the McKay Homestead, Lot 2, and still fit a good-sized house in there. It's this big plan, so it looks like small, but that's a, you know, 3,500 square foot house. And then over here, this would be the last lot, which we're calling Lot 3. So let me talk about Lot 3 for a sec. So Ms. McKay does not want to build. What she wants there is she wants privacy. So she wants to retain Lot 3, that would go to her. And you can see how we've run the line all the way back to the Cochasset River. That would be a lot that she owns, because she lives in this house right here to the left. So this is her home right now. This lot would go with her home, and we show it as a buildable lot. However, I'm very doubtful that the Conservation Commission would grant this to be a buildable lot, because we'd be crossing this wetland here. And as we talked about before, really, we have another alternative. So we're creating our own hardship in this particular case. So now you're probably thinking, well, why are you even showing it like that? It's because Frank Spillane could explain it better. It's for tax purposes. So right now, we're showing it as a buildable lot, three lots. Truthfully, if my client came in and said, I want to build a lot back to Lot 3, I'd say, yeah, I'm not going to take the job, because you can't get it. But you can go get somebody else and try. But we want to show it as such. So this is what we want to do. And then this back parcel A, which is what we're showing back here, and it stretches to the back, this is 6.9 acres. So we have to convey a minimum of 45% of the land, total land, into open space. And in this particular case, we want to convey the open space to the town, to the Conservation Commission, so they would remain virgin, only for conservation purposes, for impertuity, and that's very important to Ms. McKay. So that would be the property, and that's why I spent so much time at the beginning talking about all the land around us, how it fits. This piece fits in perfectly with it. It gives, you know, it just fits in there. It doesn't give access out to South Street, but there's plenty of access off of, you know, Mill Street, Sprague Road, Thurston Street, White's Farm Lane, any of those other areas. So that's the presentation. We're just asking to get your thoughts on it right now. If we get a positive feel for what you're telling us, then we'll be coming back with a preliminary plan, and then the cluster open space will be right behind it, probably filed at the same time, because there's going to be no road for the cluster. And I think that's another good thing, because we're in, again, we're in a Water Resource Protection District, we're in a Surface Water Protection District, and we're near a river. So if we can eliminate a lot of potential impervious area roadway, I think that's a positive in an area like this.
Lot 3 would never be developed.
And Lot 3, in my opinion, could not be developed, but you'd never say never.
You'd need a wetland crossing to access it, so.
You'd need a wetland crossing, and you've created your own hardship by creating the lot that way.
But there's nothing we can put in a deed saying it could never be developed?
I think we would ask not to, at this point, as I sit here today, because we've had, again, discussions with, Mr. Spillane would be the attorney for the project, and he thought it was advantageous to her and to the estate to show it as a buildable lot, because if someday she wanted to either put a deed restriction on it or donate it to the town, it would have a higher value. That could change, because if you show it as a buildable lot, you're also taxed as a buildable lot. So that could weigh into the equation. But right now, as we sit here today, what we're showing it as is, for zoning purposes, it is a buildable lot. It has 50 feet of frontage and, what, 30,000 square feet of area.
Could Lot 3 ever be combined with her existing property in front? It's one larger lot.
You can combine lots 1, 2, and 3?
No, Lot 3 with her existing.
It could be.
Yeah, that's what my thoughts were as well. I mean, if truly the intention is to keep it for privacy and all that, then why wouldn't you? What's the downside?
No, I'm here to listen.
Well, that was a question to you. What is the downside, if there is one?
I think it's, if it's not buildable or is buildable.
If it were to be conveyed to the current land that she is living on now?
I think, I don't know. No, it's a tax question. I don't know.
And what happens if she sells her house? Does this piece go with it?
If they were combined, then it would. But if it was a separate lot, no, because it is under zoning, it's big enough, it's a conforming lot. I shouldn't say buildable. It's a conforming lot, it has 50 feet of frontage and 40,000 square feet. I always tell people, they come in and go, is this a buildable lot? I say, it's not a buildable lot until the building commissioner hands you a building permit. But yeah, it's conforming right now, so it's what we're showing. But what I'm hearing from you is you'd like to see it not. That would sweeten the pot if it was not a buildable lot, or to be conveyed, to be combined with her land.
I was just trying to figure out the logic behind it, Bill, that was all. Because it appears that to do what you're proposing here, you're only going to get one buildable lot out of this.
One buildable lot.
Right.
As I stated, Ms. McKay's major, she has a duty, fiduciary duty as the executor of the estate. There are other people involved, nephews. And so she has a duty to, you know, work with them to get something. So I'm sure, I'm not going to speak for her, but from listening to her the last year or so, I'm sure she would love to convey the whole thing and give it up. But she has a duty to, a fiduciary duty as well. So, but the reality is, is we're talking about, in my opinion, one additional Form A lot, for all intents and purposes.
They would not be creating, you know, new roadways for the town to maintain by doing it this way as well.
Yep. Are there any other variances that you'd be looking for, that you need? No, not if they do this. That's a Form A.
Yeah, we would, if the board had looked at this and said, it looks okay, I would come back with a preliminary plan, because I have to file a preliminary plan on the OSRD, prove to you that we could build it, so it's more detailed than what I'm showing you tonight. If you accepted that and said, yes, it's good for three lots, then you would close that hearing, and then we would open another hearing, and I would present you this, a plan basically that shows, like a Form A, what you're going to, not sign tonight, but what you've signed in the past. It's basically a Form A, and we'd have a definitive subdivision, open space residential discussion on that. And then if you sign that, that would be it. We've done it, you've done it before. I'll give you examples. Lakeview for Ferroni, with the two lots, do you remember that?
The motor property.
27 Lakeview.
Remember that? We did that. So we went to the ZBA, got blown out. So we came to the board and said, okay, we're going to do an open space. And we showed you we can do two or three lots, whatever it was. You approved it, and then we came back, and basically it's two Form As, and all the backland went to the Conservation.
Right, right.
It's very similar to that. And going even way further back, along Lakeview and Main Street, where the Lutheran Church is, all those Form As, that was the same thing. That was shown as a cluster. I didn't do it. But they showed how many lots I could get in there, and then they came back and said, okay, we're going to do a cluster. Basically, they had a Form As along Lakeview and Main, and all that backland, again, went to the Conservation Commission. So it's not something that the board hasn't entertained in the past.
No, no, no. I think it's an interesting concept. I mean, typically, you're coming in with a project like this, looking to show us conventional, is doable, and then looking for multiple buildable lots, and this is the complete opposite. So we're just trying to wrap our heads around that one.
Right, process it. It's, that's all she wants.
Okay.
Because it's in the Water Resource District, the only change in the dimensions is the size of the lot. The lot, minimum size is 30,000 square feet as opposed to 20. But other than that, all the different dimensions are the same.
Yep, and they meet that, so. Any other comments from the board? No? Good, okay. I think we've got an okay feeling on it, Bill.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So let me open my next one. My name is Bill Buckley, Bay Colony Group for the record, and I'm here this evening representing Dan and Alex Peterson. Mr. and Mrs. Peterson are here this evening, and yes, they are related to Jeff, so he couldn't be here anyways. So the second set of plans that I gave you, and I've just put up on the board here, this is a piece of property, it's located at 438 South Street. So if you were looking at the screen, if you were coming from the top, you'd go over 495, you'd be coming from the center of town, and it's probably the third house on the right. And it's an existing single-family home. It used to be Bobby Mooreshed's house. If that's what you're, if it looks familiar, okay. I'm sure you probably hung out there.
No, no.
So Mr. and Mrs. Peterson, I own this property. It's a total of 6.6 acres of land. It contains a single-family house. And it's actually a little bit odd. If you looked at here, where I'm showing you, this is a piece of the property, and then in the back here, which I don't have the whole slice on here, but it runs all the way to 495, there's another rectangular piece, and it touches right there. And there's a little 20-foot access easement that runs over this. And what that was, was back in the day, and I don't, I can't think of the name of the subdivision, Gabby, what is it up on 106?
The gable said Foxborough Green.
King Philip?
Yeah, the gable said Foxborough Green is King Philip Place.
King Philip Place. And so what those developers did, they came in and talked to Mrs. Mooreshed when they were doing the development, and bought a chunk of her property, which is this piece over here. And this is what's left, and they left this piece here with that little access easement. So it's about 6.6 acres, but really, it's a little bit, the main piece that we're talking about is about three, three acres, a total of 139,000 square feet. So what we'd like to do here, and I wish I could, I'm going to zoom up on it, because I want you to kind of feel what we're talking about, and not just the whole piece. I know it's busy, but if you take a look here, there's a bit, a bit, a bit, a bit of a driveway that comes in here, it's actually got an island in the middle. So it comes in and goes in the back. Existing home is in the left, and there's quite a large garage, garage in the rear here. So what Mr. and Mrs. Peterson would like to do is they would like to knock down the existing house and the existing garage, subdivide the land into two lots, build their home over here to the north on Lot 1, and then Lot 2 would be sold. So, and I'm saying that now, Lot 1 and 2, maybe they'll build on Lot 2 and build on Lot 1. This is how we're talking right now. But their intention is to build one of their homes on the, one of them will be their home. So the lot has some wetlands on it, there's wetland along the back here, it's off the property. Down here in the corner, it comes in a little bit, so it has buffer zone. It also has an isolated wetland in the middle, not that you care about that, it's non-jurisdictional, doesn't fall under the Wetlands Protection Act, because it doesn't connect, and it also doesn't fall under the local bylaw, again, because it doesn't collect. But we're not planning on building in it or working in it. We'll be staying in the upland area, kind of behind where the existing house is. So what we'd like to do is, let me show you what can be done, which is what this first plan is. We could build a conventional subdivision coming in. So it would be a 20-foot wide roadway, which is the minimum standard in Foxborough. It would have a 50-foot cul-de-sac radius, so 100 feet of pavement across, quite a bit of pavement, but that is the new standard. And it would have a sidewalk on one side. It would be approximately, I think it's 350 feet of roadway. See if I got that right. Yeah. So it's approximately 350 feet of roadway, and we could do it. And in today's market, as everybody knows, it's doable. You know, the numbers are off the wall for what a lot is worth. So something that you look at maybe 10, 15 years ago and say, oh, that's not, that's not doable. It's doable. I'm just telling you what it is now. And you can just look in the, see what lots are selling for. So, but we don't want to build a cul-de-sac, we don't want to make a DPW angry, and quite frankly, not interested in doing that type of development. So if you go to the next sheet, it looks very familiar, because really, what you're looking at is the exact same lot configuration. Same, it's the same lot on the left, and it's the same lot on the right, and the roadway is there. What is different is, instead of a 20-foot road and a 50-foot cul-de-sac, what we're showing is, you know, a 12-foot wide driveway.
So a private drive?
It would be a private driveway, it would be a private roadway, because we have to create the frontage for the lots. So we would have to go through the subdivision control process, but we would have this minimal roadway in there. And what it would be, would be a glorified driveway. Now, I showed 12 feet, it's really up to the fire department, what they want. Some of the projects we've come before you, 12 feet is fine. Other times, they've said, no, we want 18 feet. I don't know what it would be. I'm guessing 12 would be okay, because we have this hammerhead, so a fire truck would pull in, back out a little bit, and pull out. He wouldn't have to go out on the South Street. We'd have to play with the radiuses a little bit. But you get the idea what we're looking for, is we're looking for some very minimal roadway width, minimal acceptable to the public safety, and then the roadway would remain private, for all intents and purposes. It looks like a common driveway. Again, the board is familiar with these type of actions. We would, you know, we would accept it to be a private road, there would be no maintenance involved for the community. There would be no maintenance involved for the community. One of the lots would take ownership of the road, which would become a parcel. And then that lot would have the responsibility to maintain it. And then the other lot would also have the, an easement over it for all purposes, for roadway. So that would be to bring in water, gas, electric, driveway. How they plowed it, how they did that, their problem, not the town's problem. So I'm not sure how that would go. So that's what we're looking for this evening. We would be looking for, if the board would look at this and be favorable toward it, we would come back in and be looking for waivers for the roadway width, curbing, sidewalks, cul-de-sac, street lights. We usually ask for street trees. You usually say no and want a donation to the tree fund, which is fine, is standard. And then we would say that the roadway would remain private.
I think it's pretty cut and dry. Any comments?
Yeah, I don't see any issues at all.
Tom?
No, it looks good to me.
Go for it, sir.
We'll be back. Thank you very much.
Why don't we do the site plan modification first? Being slightly past 7:05 PM, site plan modification, 65 Green Street, drainage improvements, BTC 3 Foxborough S I C LLC.
And my apologies.
It's okay.
No problem. So, good evening. My name is Brian McCarthy with RJ O'Callaghan Associates. We're civil engineers. And we're working for the owner of the property at 65 Green Street. The entity is BTC 3 Foxborough LLC. The owner, it's an entity of Ari's Management. So I'm going to pull up this plan. Okay, so, so as I mentioned, the site is at 65 Green Street. The site is actually occupied by a 50,000-square-foot building. On the screen here, I'm showing that building, 50,000 square feet. And it's got two access drives off of Green Street, some parking in the front, parking along the side, the east side, and loading docks in the back area here. The building, the use of the building is industrial warehousing, got some office space, kind of a flex building.
Wasn't there like a fitness?
There was a fitness-type supplier of equipment. But currently, it's vacant. And the owners are renovating the building. They've been working on the inside of the building to renovate it and have been marketing it for a tenant. So what they found as they were renovating, they haven't owned it for very long, maybe a couple, maybe a year or so. And they found when they, you know, were renovating the inside and taking stuff down and starting the work inside that we're having a problem with stormwater entering the building. Now, as we all know, in the last years, couple of years, we've been getting larger and larger storm events. And so it's become a problem. So, and what's happening is on this northwest corner of the building, right in here, that's where the water is coming in down the slope. And I'll show you a blow-up here of this. So this is basically a blow-up of that corner of the building. This northwest corner. And you can see here, we have some topo on the plan. And what happens out there is the ground slopes from the property line down to the side of the building here. And a pretty relatively steep slope. But the ground along the side of this building here is pretty flat. It's just flat. So in those heavy rainstorms, and it's, the other thing is it's all grass area, so you wouldn't normally expect this to happen. But in those heavy rain events, the water's coming down the slope and it sits at the bottom where it's flat up against the building. And the elevation of the ground is pretty much at the floor elevation. So when the water comes down the slope, it ponds and while it's waiting to, while it's taking that time to infiltrate through the grass, that buildup of water is finding its way into the building. So they, you know, hired us to take a look at it and see what we could do. We looked at it, trying to create swales to try and get that water out of there. But it's just so flat. We just couldn't make that work. So the solution that we've come up with is to put in area drains along that side of the building. And so on this plan, the line here along the side of the building is an eight-inch ADS plastic pipe with several area drains. We got, we got one, two, three, four, five, six area drains. Also wrapping around the front corner there because that area is also flat and the water finds its way around there too. So our solution to it is to put in these area drains here, with an eight-inch, basically an eight-inch pipe, collect those and tie it into the existing structure in the paved driveway out the front of the building. And we feel that, and then there'll be some slight modifications to the grades as we, where we put those area drains in, we'll just slope the ground into those area drains, direct the water into them. And then reseed, reestablish the grass all around those area drain areas. So that's pretty much what the plan is.
Is there just a single structure there in the driveway that you're tying into? Was it a part of a broader system?
It actually is the upper end of the paved area drainage system. So that catch basin, actually you can see it in light here, runs along, does a 12-inch.
Oh, yeah.
RCP.
Yep.
That ties to the next catch basin. Keeps going down around the side of the building to other catch basins. And eventually it does discharge over to the, there's a wetland on the far, on the east side off the land there. So, but that's what we would be tying it to.
Are you also draining the roof drainage in there as well?
No, the roof, the roof is, there's no downspouts on that side of the building. So there's no roof water going in there. So it seemed to be the most practical solution to the problem. And we did, we weren't sure early on whether we needed to have a site plan review, so. But the billing commissioner did say that the zoning, I guess, if you disturb more than 1,000 square feet of ground, it triggers site plan review. So that's why we submitted the application.
Well, I would say it looks very straightforward.
Yeah?
And we wouldn't be impacting any of the trees or anything like that. It's all, it's all grass area.
Yeah, the plans were reviewed by the Assistant DPW Director, Town Engineer Lance DePriore, and he approved them. He didn't think that that was, you know, any significant changes. The only condition that he requested is that we, in our, in our letter of decision that we require that the contractor submit a trench permit and provide notification before backfilling of the trench for inspection.
Good, okay. Do we need to take a vote on this?
Yes, this is a public hearing and it's a modification to the site plan.
So it is a modification for approving a modification rather than waiving.
Right, right.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion that we.
Close the public hearing?
Well, that we close the public hearing. That's not what I was going to say, Gary, but thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. And now I'd make a motion that we approve the modified site plan for 65 Green Street with the conditions previously noted about trenching and being able to leave that open for inspections.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Now we have action items to address.
Yes, and the action items is the lot release for 31 Chestnut Street. I have a plan here if you want to take a look. You can take a sheet and pass it down. That shows the lot. In question is, sorry, Lot 5G, which is on the left side of the road at the intersection of Chestnut Street and Shea Lane.
Oh, yeah. Was that the location of our beer garden?
No.
No.
No, that was, the, a house was there when the subdivision was approved originally. There was a house there. I believe that that was created as a Form A lot originally. But because it was reflected on the plans for the subdivision, the attorney, the house is being sold and the attorney, the closing attorney would like to have a statement that the lot is not under covenant. And that's why they're requesting a lot release. I think it's just, you know, belt and suspend or some kind of thing, as Paige would say. The subdivision is closed. It's, you know, the plan that you have there is, was the street acceptance plan. So we have, we're holding nothing on the subdivision. Everything is finished there.
I'd make a motion that we approve the lot release request for 31 Chestnut Street.
A second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. If you could sign the form.
Okay, and we have minutes?
Yes, minutes from April 11th. I sent them out earlier this week. Hopefully everybody read them.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye.
And we have to continue the public hearings.
Now we don't. Okay, where's that paper?
So the first one would be Wall Street?
Yep, 3032 Wall.
Yes.
Okay, I'd make a motion that we contin, well, that we continue the public hearing on a special permit site plan at 3032 Wall Street for TNC Development LLC until May 23rd, 2024. Do we have times or no?
We can do 7:10.
Whatever you like, Diane.
7:10 then.
I'll second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would make a motion that we continue public hearing for a special permit at 73 Main Street for construction of an eight-unit multifamily dwelling by applicant Briar Wood Construction. And we'd continue that until May 23rd, 2024.
7:20.
At 7:20.
I'll second up.
All in favor? Aye.
And lastly, I make a motion that we continue public hearing for a special permit and definitive subdivision plan at 204 East Street for a proposed 12-lot subdivision, applicant Pine Air LLC. And we'd also continue that to May 23rd, 2024.
7:30.
At 7:30.
I'll second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jeff, you have one more motion you can make.
Motion to adjourn.
Wait one. The meeting on May 9th has zero items on the agenda, so would we like to cancel?
All in favor?
Very sorry about this.
It's okay. You only held that one guy up, so.
Yep. And he was quick, so.
All right, so we adjourned the meeting.
Did we adjourn?
Adjourned.
Thank you.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.